Wonder what that was.
Okay. Hello, everybody. Welcome to the October 17th Chesapeake Beach Town Council Meeting. I will call to order, let the record reflect that the entire council mayor are present, except for Council Vice President Bodine and Councilman Fink. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one mission under God, indivisible, ever to end justice for all.
Before we begin, I'd like to recognize North Beach Town Councilman Mickey Hummel. We've got two empty seats up here if you're not busy. And I'd like to just say a few words. This morning, we learned about the passing of longtime U.S. Congressman Elijah Cummings. Elijah was a lifetime Maryland resident. He was not only a staunch defender for civil rights and for poor people, but he was a man who knew the value of crossing the aisle. He knew compromise, and that's how he got things done. And unfortunately, you know, we need more colleagues like him to realize the value of compromise. So if we can, I'd like to take a moment of silence for the congressman. Thank you. Next, approval of the agenda. What's the council's pleasure?
Moved to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? At this time, we ask, is there public comment on anything that is on the agenda? Hearing none. Approval of the minutes of the September 19th Town Council Meeting?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Approval of the minutes of the September 19th closed executive session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Approval of the minutes of the October 7th work session?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? At the... Now, I have the pleasure of giving a presentation. We're giving the presentation, not him, to our longtime friend, Beach Elementary Principal, Mike Schisler. As most folks know, you know, we work hand in hand. You know, we're a big supporter of the school, and the school's a big supporter of the town in many, many ways. So we... The council, in its infinite wisdom, last budget session, decided to continue awarding Beach Elementary with a $5,000 grant. Dr. Schisler uses this money to buy things, you know, educational tools for our children, our children in town, tools that they normally wouldn't have if it wasn't for the generosity of this Town Council and the citizens. So I'm going to... It's a big check, so it's for a big guy. So I'm going to come up front there. I'm going to present it with the council and possibly get some pictures taken.
Thank you, sir. They're waiting for you at PNC. Ask them if they can get this back to you when it's done. Processing it.
Thank you to all of us, all of you folks.
Thank you.
If you can do this, we'll all have time to start it. Most appreciated. It's helped us get things, helped us replace things, helped us do things with our kids that you see when you see them in the spring, play our rocks and play the teams. Robots. They've got their stories. Thank you. Have to promise to bring his back since we're learning something new.
When we have our next family.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Merrill.
Mayor, can I just add that Vicki Hummel was a former Beach student also?
I heard it took him six years to get through grade five.
We won't hold that against you, Doctor.
Yeah, yeah. He was your oldest student and then the youngest councilman. Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming by. Okay. North Beach Fire Department, we've read the report. If we have any questions, we can funnel them through Larry. Deputies' report, we've read the deputies' report. Do we have any questions? Hearing none, thank you, sir. Public Works Report, we've read the Public Works Report. Jay isn't here. We have any questions, Holly can funnel them to Jay. So send Holly an email with your questions. Code Enforcement Report, same thing. If you have any questions, Holly will get the answer for you through Connie. Town Engineers Report, somebody's here. We've read Paul's report. Do we have any questions of Paul? All right. I'll... Actually, okay.
I was just going to add, last item altered for the water sewer manual. This is an update. I did meet with my attorney, tell me questions. I have forms of more information, meeting and actual meeting. Had a good discussion with them, answered some of their questions. I think they will then go forward to their next actual meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Morris.
Hi, Paul. I was just wondering what the Ridgefield Station community is wondering, when they could expect the lights to be installed and be functional down here at that intersection? They've been...
I don't know the final date. I think the mayor, I think you talked to...
I did, I spoke to Kim Tran as I... I forget when I mentioned it here, but it was basically, they're hoping to get the light that is on backorder that they can't buy the poles, I'm sorry, in early January, and then there's sort of a 90-day window after that. So we're talking spring.
I don't know if you noticed, but they have been putting in conduits with the lights.
Yes, they did that work. We'll be apprised of that as it comes along.
My only question, thank you.
All right.
That one as well.
Yes, sir.
So the Heritage Project. So I drive by that every day coming home, and it doesn't seem like those trucks move at all. Is it... Is there any reason why it's not moving? I mean, I know it's obviously not in our purview, but do we know...
They've been sending us shop drawings to review and approve for all the water sewer lines, everything. I mean, I got one today, so I don't know.
They're moving behind the scenes.
They're on grade for the front.
Yeah, you just don't...
Yeah.
Seen any physical...
I don't know their... I don't think I would do it the way they are, but... Yeah, I mean, they haven't gone cold. I still get reports every other week from the Geotech.
Yeah, that was really the question, is it just stopped completely? So things are moving just under the surface.
Thank you, Paul. Water Park Report, we've read Marilyn's report. Do we have any questions of Marilyn? Hearing none. Water Reclamation Treatment Plant Report, we've read John's report. Do we have any questions of John? Yes, sir.
John? So in the second paragraph of your report, it talked about the core sampling for the filters and the results would be back in early October. Have you seen the results?
Yes, we got the results back.
Okay.
They did a mineral test, and then they did a biological test on it also. And they found on the mineral side, we had a lot of calcium buildup. And then on the biological side, they didn't actually break it down to identify what type of bacteria is in it, or algae, or stuff like that, living organic material. But they said that's in there also. So they recommended cleaning the filters, and they use this one BioGrow something product that will handle the minerals and disinfect it. So that's where we're at right now. We're trying to get some calls from them and get it to see if it... We'll do one filter first to see if we can get it back, the turnkey, and then we'll go from there on the other filters.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Town Treasurer's Report, the treasurer is not here. He gave a report at the work session, and he'll be back at our next meeting. Town Administrator's Report, any... Anything you care to share with the town outside your report? Okay. Yes, councilman?
Just two questions on the item on the UBC Power Station. Location.
Okay. Mayor's Report. Well, this is something that I or no prior mayor to me has ever been able to say, so I'm going to say it. The hometown team is in the World Series. You know, and I think we... Yeah, we can give applause. Everybody want to give applause for them? All right, yeah. Yeah, so there's nothing like pennant fever, and there's nothing like World Series fever. So I think it's great that everybody in town is going to be excited. Starts next Tuesday, and the home games are in town here next weekend, so everybody knows what they're doing. Make sure that your television works. And I just wanted to, you know, say that the town's Halloween event is Sunday, October the 27th. It's... We usually get a good crowd, the kids are very excited, the parents are happy to have them all, you know, run around, and they get their sugar fix, so all the dentists are happy, I guess. So it's a fun event. It's at the community center, and I look forward to seeing everybody there. And that's my report. Next, I want to introduce and vote on Resolution R-19-3, a resolution of the mayor and Town Council of Chesapeake Beach approving these small wireless facilities design guidelines. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, however, I have some amendments.
Right now, it's a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's a second, and the maker of the motion has an amendment or two or whatever, so the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. As many of folks know, we had worked together with North Beach in developing some guidelines for small cell infrastructure should make it to the town. It was based on several other approved ordinances or resolutions that have been approved in several, many of the municipalities here in the state, and it's also backed by the suggested rules were suggested also by Maryland Municipal League. Given that we had gone to the MML over the summer, and many of us had gone on a field trip looking at what Ocean City had done over there, and we realized that our community is comprised of about 70% of our residents live in homeowners associations. So I'd like, one amendment I'd like to propose would be...
If you would, so you're basically saying, you know, I moved to amend the resolution to add, and I would read the whole thing.
Okay, I moved to change or to add to the resolution. Suggesting in section, to add these to Section 8, under general provisions, there would be a paragraph H that all proposed small cell equipment locations must be approved by the Town Council prior to being permitted by the town.
If we all want to take one amendment at a time? Okay, so we have an amendment here. I think the town attorney has some legal counsel to share with us on this particular amendment?
You can add that amendment, however, you need to be clear that the only grounds for the Town Council overruling a decision that an application meets the criteria that are in here would have to be based on those, the application of those criteria. In other words, it can't come to you and then you just say, "Yeah, but we don't like it." So if you look back at the text of the resolution itself, it says, "The order preempts any aesthetic requirements for small wireless facilities unless they are reasonable, no more burdensome than those applied to other types of infrastructure deployments." So that's, you know, going to be a question. Our objective, which you've got, you've got objective standards in this resolution, and so an application will either comply or not comply, and they are published in advance. So you couldn't have an application come in and say, "Oh, yeah, but we didn't think about whatever characteristic that it has, and we don't like it, so we're denying it." So I'm concerned about the language in H because it sounds as if the Town Council wants to have the ability to deny a permit that otherwise meets the criteria in the guidelines.
Is there any suggestive wording that we could do to make it?
I would add, provided that the Town Council will not reject an application for reasons other than its compliance with the design guidelines.
You can move to add that to your amendment?
If that's what the attorney's recommending, I move to have that added to the amendment?
Isn't it inherent, though, in the document, in the guidelines anyway? Like you just explained? I mean, that seems to be additive language that's really not adding anything.
I am adding it as a precaution because I can't, I'm not sure what the intent of bringing it to the Town Council after a decision has been made that it meets all the criteria is other than to make a finding on some other point. And I want to clarify, and it doesn't have to be that language, I want to clarify that the approval or rejection of an application has to be in accordance with the guidelines.
I understand what you're saying. So you're aware of in Ocean City where they have the requirement in their ordinance that the council had to approve every location? And this is what we're trying to adopt, is the same?
So again, I have, I don't know what Ocean City's ordinance says, so I can't really comment on that.
Maybe you had a hand in crafting that.
No, I did not. I did not write theirs. And again, there's no reason you can't be the decision maker in this. I'm not suggesting that you can't. I just want to be clear that the decision you're making is, does it or does it not comply with the guidelines? And so you could adopt it, you could adopt it as is without my added language, but I just, I want to make sure that that's not the intention in adding that language to just sort of have a wild card spot for rejection of...
Well, I think that in spirit, we're just talking about location to not the other...
Just to do a procedural here, you know, I need to stick to that. We... Councilman Morris has amended his amendment to reflect the wording of the town attorney. Is there a second to Councilman Morris's amendment? Hearing none, then we're back to the original wording, okay, which we have in front of us. So discussion. Looking at you. You did discuss.
Well, I mean, this is a resolution. It's not an ordinance. It's not going to be called... It is a resolution, but it shows, I think the idea is that it shows our thought process with 5G and our intent moving forward with the expectation that, you know, we can't predict what it's going to look like when it eventually arrives, if it ever does, but it does show that we've thought about this, we're interested in it. We want to be partners with the companies if they decide to come down, but we do want to have a say to represent our residents in how that process unfolds. So, I mean, I certainly support it. I didn't second it because frankly, I just didn't see the benefit because it seems what you said is already inherent in the document, so I don't... And again, it's a resolution anyway, it's not an ordinance, so I'm not sure that it's that binding.
That, well, it's going to need to be binding to meet the SEC's requirements. I mean, I understand that it's a resolution, and that makes it easier for you to change and update and amend as time goes on, but if you're saying in this resolution that these are the guidelines we're going to abide by, and then you don't, then I'm not sure you've met the requirements of the order. So, but I'm expecting that you will, so I'm, you know, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so we're fine with it.
I'm fine with the amendment proposed, but I have a question, just based upon what was relayed by the town attorney, and that is, are we, and the question's for you, mayor, are we planning on putting forward an ordinance in the future on this, or is this the only standing document?
This is the only standing... This is all I have right now.
Because I was under the impression as well that as a resolution, it's kind of a, an intent, saying we're supportive and these are what we're thinking, but that it wasn't binding in a legal sense, but it doesn't sound like that's true from what you said, or that there is a requirement that we have something.
Right, so if you just go back to the actual language of the order, they have to be reasonable, no more burdensome than those applied to other types of infrastructure deployments, objective and published in advance. So I think what your intent is that this document meet those criteria. So even though I have no problem with you doing it by resolution, and the resolution itself is, as you say, sort of a statement of intent, but the statement of intent is that you abide by the guidelines that are attached to it. So I don't think the guidelines themselves are things you can just apply in a piecemeal basis. I mean, I think you're telling the industry, "Here are our standards. If you bring us an application meeting these standards, we're not going to unreasonably be an unreasonable impediment to you proceeding with your business." And that's, I think, really what the spirit of the order would require.
And another question, just regarding resolutions, and how do they apply then to future councils, a resolution passed by this going into the next council? Is it other...
It will stand as long as the council doesn't amend it? So it is... Something like this would also properly be done in an ordinance, so then it's sort of in your code, and it requires a more formal procedure to change. As I said, I don't have a problem with the resolution on the guidelines, with the resolution adopting these guidelines. I think there may be provisions you do in fact need to put in your code at some time in the future that those should be done by ordinance, and that has to do with the process for submitting an application and those sorts of things. Restrictions that you're going to impose on people interfering with your rights of way and that sort of thing. Specifically me and your ordinance, just like anybody else who came to get an application, say to make a curb cut or otherwise impact.
Thank you.
I'd like to add that Ocean City, their vehicle is a resolution as well, if I understand that right.
And they've done resolutions.
Just for everybody's knowledge base there, and I'm in support of adding it as presented.
We have an amendment to add H, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any ayes have it? Okay, now we're looking for a, I believe you want to offer a second amendment, you want to move to amend this resolution to add aye?
Two more proposed amendments, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, the...
One at a time?
Yes. The second amendment would be, I suggest adding, under just general provisions, paragraph I, "All proposed small cell equipment locations located within a legally formed homeowners' association must be approved by those associations prior to being permitted by the town." And Ocean City has similar language too.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, once again, I'm going to ask the attorney if she has anything that she wants to share on this?
This one I'm actually more concerned about because it delegates to a private party the application of the legal standards that you've adopted. I think you could give the homeowners' association the opportunity to review and comment on an application, but I don't think you can say the town can't act on it unless the homeowners' association approves it because the homeowners' association isn't bound by any of the requirements of the SEC or of your ordinances or of your resolutions.
That makes sense to me, but do we have further comment from the council? Once again? On this, we should start with you, thank you. You got rubbed out last time.
If we were to change the language, so it reads, "All proposed small cell equipment locations located within a legally formed homeowners' association must be submitted to the homeowners' association for review and comment prior to being..."
Sounds good.
Yes, that way.
Your amendment?
Yes.
The amendment, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? You say you have another one, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
This one we don't have in front of us, right?
Well, I think all of these we discussed at the work session, but the third amendment would be to Section 8, Paragraph D, and change Planning Commission to Town Council.
Yes. Bear with me here, sir, what page are you on?
That would be, well, Section 8, Paragraph D.
We're on page eight?
Yes.
You said Paragraph?
D.
Okay, the town recognizes, and if you don't mind, sir, would you mind repeating that?
Yes. Change, Section 8, Paragraph D, change Planning Commission to Town Council.
Oh, I see, I got you. Basically changing the word Planning Commission to Council. I got you. Okay, so there's an amendment, there's a minor... There's a second? Discussion on this? I think the council's going to favor this one.
And I do too.
Right? And the mayor does too. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Good job, councilman. Good job, Madam Attorney, and good job, council. Okay, moving right along here.
We got to vote on the...
That's right. So now we're going to vote on the actual resolution as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Thank you, Councilman Derrick. Okay, there, planning zoning, there was a meeting held on October the 9th. Word of Appeals, there was no meeting held. Here. There was an informational meeting held then. Thank you, sir. C-Box, Mr. Bacon has taken the night off. He does a great job, I'm glad to see he's given himself a break. Economic Development, Councilman Jaworski.
Yes, I just wanted to offer one reminder that the Calvert County Economic Development Department is going to be holding a small business workshop where all businesses located in South Beach and Central Beach is going to be held on Monday, October 21st at 7:00 PM in the American House. Opportunity for small businesses to be... Find out what resources are available in the county to help your small business.
Thank you, sir. North Beach Opioid Abuse Awareness Coalition, Councilman Parton.
Thank you. So we had a meeting October 14th at 6:00 PM.
So we had a meeting October 14th at 6:00 PM here. I have a lot to tell you folks, so I'll try to keep it brief though. But one thing I wanted to do, we've been doing a lot of work and I've been mentioning, and you've probably seen it advertised, the event we're collaborating with, with the Twin Beach Players called The More You Know. And so it's taken a lot of time, a lot of effort by many, many people and many organizations. But I just wanted to kind of publicly recognize the members of our group again and some of those organizations. Because it's been at least a year probably since I've done that. So, in no particular order, they are Patty Schleter, Mike Schistler, Ashley Staples, Julia Berry, Kathy Clune, Ricky Kress, Anthony Green, Drew LaCurgo, Kathy Letney, Jane Bennetts, Kristen DePhilippe, Cheryl Green, Sandy Mattingly, and Paul Solomon, and Candace D'Agostino. And so, and they represent, well, they're residents here in the town as well as representing a lot of organizations, including the Calvert County Health Department, Calvert Lines Against Substance Abuse, the Calvert County Sheriff's Office, and Calvert County Public Schools, as well as, I know I'm going to forget somebody here, but let me try to do this. Celebrate Recovery is another one of those organizations, and of course Positive Vibes. And so I really appreciate all the work and effort they've put into our events over the last three years and especially this year. Takes a lot of time and effort. And for this event, you know, especially, I want to also recognize Windy Hill Middle School for making time and space for us to have the event in their auditorium. And this is going to be Wednesday, October 23rd, next Wednesday, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. The town is providing pizza to folks who show up at 9:00, although we do ask you to register ahead of time. But we wanted, didn't want dinner to get in the way of people being able to participate. There'll be two original plays written by students, local students. Let me find their names, Paige Plater, who I believe is a Windy Hill Middle School student. And she wrote a play called Life is Hard, it's an award-winning play in the student contest that they have. Life is Hard Exhale is the name of that, and it's about vaping, a timely subject. The other is about opioid abuse, and it was written by Cameron Walker and Ashley Vaneer. I believe Cameron is a CSM student now, graduated from Huntington High. And Ashley is a student at Calvert High. Yes, Calvert High. And so, and their play, as I said, Another Beautiful Soul Lost. And so each of those is about half an hour long, so there'll be pizza at 6:00, plays start at 6:30. And then we'll have resource service providers with their exhibits around the room so that you can visit those while you're eating your pizza or right after the plays to get more information about recovery and prevention services available in the town by these various organizations. So we're really excited how, you know, the town, the community pulled together for this. Calvert Health, I almost forgot them, they'll also have a table there. And they are providing some of the props for the play. And so we're really happy they were able to also contribute to this. So I hope y'all can make it. If, if, if you don't want pizza, just come for the plays, the kids will really appreciate that. So, let's see, what else we've been doing? We're organizing a follow-up visit with St. Anthony's Catholic Church for later this winter. And we've reached out to Bayside Baptist and North Beach Union Churches, waiting to hear back from them in terms of whether they would like an event at their location. And I ran into Paul Lundberg at the Northeast Community Center last week, and he was really excited about their last drug takeback event that they, the county had. And they're one of the locations where they, the drugs are, can be deposited. He said they received over 40 pounds of prescription medicines on that day, a record for them. And so, and he really appreciates, and he attributed a lot of it to the outreach efforts that we've been doing here in North Beach and Chesapeake Beach through, through our committee. And so he was really thrilled, and I also wanted to mention there is going to be another prescription drug takeback countywide that also includes Northeast Community Center, October 26th from 10:00 to 2:00. So if you do have any leftover prescription drugs in your house, please get rid of them before they fall into the wrong hands. We're also be, our group will be at the Halloween event and giving out red ribbon items such as this wristband, like we've done every year, compliments of Chesapeake Beach, to the kids coming through. And it has a, you know, a little message about staying drug-free. We do, we've done that for the last two years. We're also looking into doing another Resource Fair event. We've been doing those around the holidays. We decided to move it out into the, the winter a little more after the first of the year. And we're, we're discussing making it more of a health fair. So when you just do a kind of an outreach event, often people will not hear that or be like, oh, I don't have this problem. Even though it's affecting all of us, and hopefully you don't have the problem in your family or in your friend group. But anyway, trying to, to, to reach out to folks, either they've already reached out or maybe they don't think it's a problem, we thought we should expand. It is a health issue, it's not just a drug issue. And so, you know, we're, we're hoping to be able to collaborate with the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department and Calvert Health and not only have substance abuse awareness, but also health screenings and maybe information about healthy eating and exercise, that type of thing. So we'll see how that goes, and hopefully I'll have more on that as we go further here. And I think that's all about the meeting. And I should mention, the minutes from our meetings are on the town website if anybody wants to see those. The ones, ones I have now are draft, and once they're approved, they'll go up on the website. But if anybody wants a copy, please let me know, and I'll see that they get one. Just a few statistics then before we go from the Calvert County Sheriff's Office Weekly Report. In the, and I just point out, from the town itself, there have been in Chesapeake Beach, eight non-fatal overdoses this year and zero fatal overdoses, which is wonderful, it's great. And that's a pattern kind of repeated in the zip code area too. And I'll get to those numbers in a moment. In North Beach, four non-fatal and one fatal for the year. In the greater Chesapeake Beach, North Beach zip code areas, there have been 25 non-fatal opioid overdoses this year and one fatal, which is that one that you just heard about. So, you know, overall, we're very excited again about the fact that there's not been hardly any fatal overdoses in this area. Just to put that into context, there have been a total of 86 non-fatal in the county and 23 fatal in the county with the, kind of the highest areas again being Prince Frederick and the Losby area with 20 non, seven fatal. And then Prince Frederick, 19 non and six fatal. So it does, you know, there is still a big, a huge problem. I think we're making a little progress in this area, so that's kind of the silver lining. And I think that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Welcome Bowl Community Advisory Group, Councilman Fevre.
Thank you. We had no meeting on Monday, previously scheduled meeting for Monday was canceled. As I discussed in the work session, we had plans to have a teleconference with the planning firm, we still do. But they're still working on the, the progress coming out of the Twin Beaches event and other things that they're working on for us. And so we're waiting on dates and times from them. But they also did send some of their pictures of the graphics that they used or the products that they used at the session. So I thought maybe we can put those on the website. So I'll go ahead and send those to you. We can, we can get those up on the website. Good information that just shows, you know, the feedback, visually the feedback what we, what we received at the Taste of Beaches events.
Thank you, sir. No unfinished business, new business. Council appoint Kelly Stewart to the Board of Appeals. Was the council's pleasure?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Council to award a contract to already finished concrete for water park concrete pool decking repairs in the amount of $40,560.
So this is a budgeted maintenance repair item for the water park. And it would basically be repairing some of the concrete that's currently cracking and deteriorating.
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. The next is council to award a contract to Southern Maryland dredging for the emergency dredging work within the fishing creek channel in the amount of $159,000. Note that these funds will be paid by the town from, from our dredge fund and will be reimbursed 100% by the state. And I want to just take a little bit of time to elaborate on that. The, the state of Maryland is actually, you know, the reimbursing is 100%, this is not a match. This is 100%, this is as good as it gets. And I want to take the time, if you will, to, to thank our champion, Senate President Mike Miller. When he gets behind an issue for the town of Chesapeake Beach, it happens. He, he's been our champion for the 24 years I've been sitting up here. And we're just, just so blessed to get the, the aid from the state of Maryland that, you know, we get. And it, and it helps having the Senate President as your champion, as your cleanup hitter. So, thank you, Senator Miller. Is there a motion to approve?
If to approve?
Second.
Your second? Discussion, sir?
Just as a clarification, with my understanding that eight, what do you person have to do with that?
Correct.
Correct.
So the contract's $159,000. If there is several out of the, of the, or.
I actually have Mike Miller's address, I'm going to go see him and get a check. I'm going to get a check. Thank you, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Next is a petition to the county commissioners to deed parcel F, Kelmsfield back to the town. Just the, the council has read the, the letter that is drafted, and I'll be asking for their approval soon. But just as a briefing, those who were around in 2002, like my good friend, Mr. McDonald over there, remember that the, the, the town deeded this to the county for $10. We had a, a, a 20-year lease which expires in 2022. Basically, we, we had the opportunity to meet with Board President Hutchins, and, you know, I, I brought up the fact that, and I've told him this, you know, numerous times that, you know, I would like for the town to, you know, take over Kelmsfield again. He's been open to these talks. He requested that the town administrator put together a little memo, whatever, that has all the, the figures of all the, all the money that we have spent above and beyond, if you will, you know, supporting this field. You know, we agreed to do so, so when we got that information, we're, you know, responding to the, the board president with this request. Just to read to you, the council's already read this, but just to share a few things here. The, the, you know, the town has, in, in total, the five-year maintenance costs and the 10-year capital improvement expenditures have been $908,762. We, you know, why do we want it? Very simple. We're currently underway with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, which includes plans to designate the Kelmsfield Complex as a town center, further channeling residents into the recreational complex through trails, sidewalks, and other connections. The, you know, the citizens do support this. Furthermore, as part of developing that plan, the town has worked to update our sea level rise maps. As a result of these maps, the town has updated information regarding impacts of sea level rise that requires significant planning to reflect, to protect the Kelms complex. It's, it's our opinion that because we're here, it's here that we could do more to protect us in, in the future as we look forward to the next 30 years, next 20 years. So we think it's key now to address these issues. It's a, you know, we're elected to look into the future. And, you know, right now, we're looking at a 2040, you know, comprehensive plan and trying to incorporate this town ownership in, you know, to that. This, this is us doing our job, and we hope that the commissioners will support us in this. Is there a, so basically, I just need, you know, a, a motion to approve the letter from the council, and then we can have a discussion.
Move to approve?
Second.
Sir?
Is there any recollection of background of why?
It was part of a land swap that, that, that I'm not sure anybody could explain right now.
I'd like to make comment as well. You know, so as, as the mayor articulated, this has been on, on our radar for a while, and then certainly this group as well since before we were elected, I, I think we were talking about this. But if you ever looked at the, the deed lines in that property, they're, they're very confusing. So this, in, in just that sense alone, this is a logical thing because the, the football field is actually almost literally split in half between the county and the town. And which, you know, there's a lease agreement and we can work through it, it's fine, but it, it makes a lot of sense. But frankly, and I'm, and I'm speaking for a second from the, the information that I've been told as part of the Welcome Bowl Community Advisory Group, you know, the mayor said this is our center, part of our town, and, you know, we had these conversations with our residents about pedestrian access to the center of town, this is where they're talking about. And, and, you know, there's a lot of, they, they, the residents realize that, you know, this, this area of town is, is key to, you know, really everything that we do forward. So I hope the commissioners agree with us, and this is a logical move for, for all of us. And, you know, we can certainly continue the, the good partnership we have with the county regardless, you know, if, if we're deeded the, the property. But I, I hope they, I hope they see this as a, as a win-win for, for everybody.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it, we'll pass this around for a signature. And Sharon, if you can tomorrow, reach out to the other two council persons and have them come by and sign it over the weekend, preferably. Thank you. Public comments, anybody in the public have a comment for the council? There are none? Council lightning round? Councilman Larry? Go caps, yeah. We'll go caps too, what the hell, root for everybody, you know? Councilman Morris?
Mayor. Actually, this lightning round for this, this council meeting, I have some shout-outs. There's an insert in the recorder, I believe it's in the recorder, maybe in some other papers, but it's vote through November 1st for, it's Calvert Recorder, reader-approved, best of categories. And I just wanted to point out that there are several town businesses that are in here. And I specifically wanted to give a shout-out to, there's a teacher from Beach Elementary School who's up for best teacher, Jennifer Gagnon. Like to give shout-out to, there's several of the charter boats that are here, the Hot Licks, Miss Lizzie, Mama Lucia's by the Bay for Best Italian Restaurant. There's a Jay Johnson Plumbing, he's a local guy here for Best Plumber. P King Liquors. Last but not least, my favorite, dear to my heart, Best Brewery would be Greenspring Brewery here.
Yes, indeed, hometown beer.
The Rod and Reel and Traders for brunch and some other things. But a vote for any of the town businesses is definitely a vote for economic development here in the town and success of everybody here in town, frankly. And I'm not encouraging you to vote for anybody that you had a bad experience with, so. And other than that, I did want to have a very short story here. I wanted to, if you will, just bear with me. As many of you know, lived in Richfield Station for about 23 years. And there's a, a young man named Justin Reed. He's one of my son's best friends, and he's taken a big step. He's off to the army, as of two days ago, to pursue his dream of being an Army Ranger. And if any of you know Justin Reed, my son James and the circle that they run with, one of their jokes is that of their jokes is that the, the Chinese are secretly trying to get Justin's DNA so they can clone Justin for their fighting soldiers, super soldiers. Justin's a great kid. We're friends with his parents too, Buck and Brenda Reed. So when people step up for service, they're not the only ones sacrificing. Their friends and their families are sacrificing as well for the benefit of our country. So I just want to say, Justin, the town of Chesapeake Beach is, is really proud of you. So thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Councilman Parton?
Very nice. One thing, two things. One, I forgot to thank some of the most important people for our committee and that is the mayor of Chesapeake Beach and the mayor of North Beach for supporting our committee as well as the town councils of both of those towns as well. So I didn't want to be remiss in that.
Always a good idea.
Exactly. And I also wanted just to announce a, a speaker who will be coming to town Wednesday, November 6th to talk about Mom's Big Year. And so it's about a mom reinventing herself through her passion for birds. So Nancy McAllister suffered a personal tragedy and used her love of nature to kind of overcome that and to reinvent herself. And so she'll be here. She has a, a blog. I think you're going to see this announced in tomorrow's email blast and you can read more about it there. But she's a wonderful person, a great speaker, so I hope y'all can make it. It's going to be here at Chesapeake Beach Town Hall, 6:30 Wednesday, November 6th. There's some of these flyers in the back if you want to take a look at that. So thanks for coming out.
Councilman February?
Well, last month, I think I used up my time for the rest of the year.
Just going to make note of that.
So I'll be, I'll be briefed tonight. No, just thank everyone for coming out. Weather's getting kind of crummy. So it's good to see some, some folks out here and taking part in, in, in the work that we do. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. For all intents and purposes, the council meeting is over. We're going to go into, into a closed session now. I need a motion to close the regular meeting under statutory authority of Maryland Annotated Code, General Provisions Article 3-305B3 to consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose and matters directed related thereto. And 3-305B7 to consult with council to obtain legal advice. Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Thanks for coming, everybody. Appreciate it. Glad we could get you home early.
Nope, I haven't gotten anything from him.
It's beyond the flyer time deadline.
Yeah.
Should have tried to follow up sooner.
You mean for the newsletter?
No, for the, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if Marty's, if that's cut off yet or not.
I'll reach out to Greg Disney tonight.
Okay, okay.
We really need to have that. I was under pressure. It's Saturday morning.
Yeah, where did I see that? It's on Facebook, I think. Somebody put it on Facebook.
Also, I didn't know if you were going to, I might say it's, does that sound like Marty? Did I forget it to you or?
Well, she's the one that will have the pictures for them.
I didn't know if you wanted a picture where we had the badges for the paint in October. That was a nice picture.
Yeah, I mean, they, they might, would put that in there too.
Put it in the collection if anything.
Yeah.
Put your finger on it today and then you stop that water and then here you put the finger here and you're moving around and the water starts coming back over here again.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.